...the year I get to do that, so I had to do it loudly. Did you hear that? We have a new sound system in place, so it works well. This is the organizational meeting of the board, so for just a brief moment, I get to lead the meeting before the board elects a chairperson. So with that, the meeting is in order, and let's stand for our pledge of allegiance. Just a second. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's stand for a moment of silence. Item 2.1 on the agenda is the election of the chairman, so I'd like to entertain a motion for chairman of the board.
I move to be elected, Wes.
Motion by Mr. Grove and a second by Ms. Bynum. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a chairperson. Mr. Mills?
Great.
My pleasure to present this back to you.
It's my desire not to use it again.
It was so much fun.
All right, so the items that are between 2.2 and 2.5, we had mentioned last time, I guess, except for 2.3, which is your recommendations, right?
Yes.
Are they the same as last year?
One slight change.
One slight change, all right. So considering 2.2, 2.4, 2.5, is there a motion to keep the officers that we had last year in the same positions that we had last year? A motion from Mr. Ruben.
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Meyer. And is there any discussion? Do you all understand what those roles were and recall them?
Yeah.
I appreciate everybody serving those roles. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's ordered. And we'll talk about the policy committee after you present clerk, deputy clerk.
Okay, and for the record, could you just state two?
All right, so for the record, the vice chairman is Mr. Grove, the MBGS representative is Mr. Grove. So the representative headquarters is Ms. Bynum, alternate Ms. Meyer, and that's it.
Okay.
Those are the only things we just decided.
Thank you. Okay, so item 2.3, superintendent's recommendation for clerk, that recommendation will remain to be Amy Rogers. As deputy clerk, this year, we'd like to appoint Michelle Berta, and superintendent's appointment for the designated will remain Mrs. Carol Johnson.
All right. Do we have a motion to accept these nominees?
Move, second.
We have a motion, Mr. Ruben, second from Mr. Grove. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's ordered. We have a need for, under item 2.6, to form a policy committee of two board members for the coming year. There are volunteers for the policy committee, which will meet probably twice, maybe three times during the year.
Well, then sure.
Are we sure? Pretty sure.
Three times a year? Yeah, that's a good idea.
Probably sure three. Great, Ms. Meyer, thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to serve on the policy committee? Anybody?
Do you go next for you?
Yeah, that's what I was doing.
You're good? Great. Mr. Ruben, Ms. Meyer have volunteered. All in favor of accepting these as our policy committee? I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? Thank you very much for doing that. So the difference there is, it's a standing committee. Standing committee will have minutes that are taken and recorded, as opposed to other committees that we might form sporadically based upon their need. That's the difference there.
That will also allow us to have policy one month and prove it the next month.
So it could be done that same month.
Same month, right.
So we got ourselves in a pickle where if we don't have a policy committee to pre-assess the changes, they're basically presented to the full board, tabled, and then not moved upon until the following month. And this would just help us in certain cases to speed that along. Not that it's always necessary, but sometimes it is. Right?
Correct.
So we all had a chance to see the meeting scheduled, right? And there shouldn't be any surprises over there.
Is there... In the past, we've had a work session between...
There is a work session that was for budget scheduling.
Did I miss it?
This is just your regular meeting schedule for the year.
Oh, this is regular?
Yes.
So we'll have to marry those two to get...
Yes, it'd be nice to put them all in one place.
Yeah, would be good. And we'll be voting on that during our motions after public comment, right? Is that on the list? It should be on the list. Yes. All right, so we are organized and have a schedule. We welcome you to our meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens, and there is a time for public comment prior to action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonably length. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as the time has elapsed. If you have questions during this session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or an administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening?
I so move.
We have a motion from Ms. Bynum to adopt the agenda, second from Mr. Grove. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Ruben.
Mr. Ruben.
Mr. Ruben's our end.
Close.
Sorry. Mr. Ruben, second the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. I guess we have an approval of the student liaison on the agenda.
We do, and this is our transition between our two. Macy Montgomery, of course, served us very well for this previous year, and our recommendation for our new liaison is Skylar Culbertson. So Macy is going to sort of model the process here and give us our update.
Okay. So the senior class raised $198 at Buffalo Wild Wings because we do a spirit night there as a fundraiser to go to Boston on Thursday, December 6, 2018. Inquisible just had a tournament yesterday, and they won two out of three matches, and their overall record is seven and two. And they have away tournament next Monday, the 14th, and they have a full run tournament here Thursday, January 17th, next week as well.
Do you know where the away tournament is?
I do not.
Okay.
Okay. I do know that they are able to go to national tournament in Chicago, and they are being funded to be able to do that. And I spoke with Mr. Nazir, and he believes that's Thursday through Sunday, the 2nd through the 5th in May.
That'd be great.
Backpacks at the food pantry will continue every week, each Tuesday during our break period. The National Honor Society is doing tutoring here at RCHS after school each Tuesday. There's also a blood drive this Friday that NHS is sponsoring. Senior class, there's another fundraiser at Buffalo Wild Wings for Thursday, January 17th. And there's also a gaming tournament on Friday, January 18th. And there's also more fundraisers for Valentine's Day. We're selling flowers because we're trying to get that money to go to Boston. So, yeah.
Does this gaming tournament, what kind of games?
Okay, so it's like Mario Kart, so kids, well, any age really, can come and play Mario Kart as like a gaming tournament, and they go onto like different levels.
Video gaming tournament.
Yes, video gaming tournament.
Okay.
And I'd also like to say that I was accepted into VCU and Liberty University.
Woo!
Yeah, so, thank you. So I'm happy that I was able to serve you guys. Before I go off to wherever, I still have 10...
To wherever.
Yeah, I still have 10 more schools to your back room, so we'll see.
Oh.
Yeah, so wherever I go, although I do love Liberty, so, but I know that Skylar will be able to serve you guys well over the next year. So thank you, guys, for having me.
Yeah, thanks for doing what you're doing.
Absolutely, and before you leave us...
Ah.
On behalf of the school board in Rappahannock County Schools, we'd like to present you with a little gift and a certificate for your service. You've served us very well, and we're so proud of you. Thank you very much.
Donations.
Yes, I have several to report. The first one I'm going, is from Amosville Home Acres. They donated gloves, scarves, and hats for the students. TC Roby Construction donated $550 for the girls' basketball shirts. Clark Tibbetts donated 75 individual pocket microscopes, and I guess that's for, oh, for the seventh grade science classes. And Headwaters donated a PMO and to be moved to the elementary school and paid for the moving expenses and the tubing services.
Cool.
And then we have a long list of our donations for our holiday party. And so I'm not going to read them all, but I thought she could just scroll down, but we had a lot of donations for our holiday party.
These are giveaways to the staff?
We did as a raffle to the staff. The community came out in force and provided so many wonderful gifts. I think it totaled, when we, $3,000 about for gifts for the teachers and staff, so, and they were incredible. If you look at some of these, it was just...
Do you want me to read them?
But, yeah, lots of gift certificates. The wineries all came out, spa gifts, and the inn at Little Washington gave dinner for two for teachers. That was incredible. So our teachers and staff really felt the love from the community, and that was wonderful.
That's great. All right, thanks. We've had opportunity to review the minutes for the December 11th meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
So move.
We have a motion from Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Ruben. Is there any discussion? All in favor of accepting of the minutes as documented? I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, Mr. Grove, did you have up to the...
I did. There were two bills for elementary doors, the replacement of doors.
Was that the exterior doors or...
At the elementary school.
Divider doors?
Hmm?
Are the big accordion divider door needed to be replaced that had broken, so that was one of those.
Thirty, that was $10,000 almost, yeah. Okay.
It's expected.
Well, I do, I do look at it.
That's good. Makes our facilities functional.
Everything else is, right in, right in, and they're safe, I assume.
Yes, absolutely. Not automated, so no, yes.
All right, thanks. So on the consent agenda, approval of accepting the donations, paying the bills, our campus report, and Hope School report, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
We have a motion from Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Ruben. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tom. Okay, item one, 5.1, is the Narcan policy update. If you recall, last year, there was a code passed in Virginia to, for certain law enforcement agencies to be able to carry and administer Narcan for overdose victims. So this has kind of gone through the state, and we were tasked with looking at possibilities for a policy for schools. So I've asked Linda Torrance to sort of lead that as our, as our school nurse, and Brittany Womans here as well as a school nurse, as our health professionals and experts in the field, and they also run the school health advisory panel and have gathered a lot of feedback and research on that topic. So Linda, if you'd like to come up and share some information with the board. No policy is being given tonight for you to review. The policy committee may or may not receive, depending on what you feel like as a board tonight, a draft policy to look at, to bring back to the board for review, approval, comments, and all of that, if that's something you so choose. But we have messengers here that are bringing you information that they've gathered over the course of this timeframe, and it is so new, so there's not a whole lot of, in fact, there's only one other school district right now that has a policy in place, so...
There's two, I think.
Is there one more?
Yeah.
Roanoke was the only one we had seen, but there could be. You could be right.
The city school, that's in, probably in Roanoke County, but it's a city school. It's a separate school system.
Okay, okay. All right, ladies.
It's the name of it.
Can you hear me?
Is it on?
Maybe, I don't feel like...
You gotta...
There, we're... We are the school nurses for our school system, and we want to make sure our students are safe and healthy at school. We all know there's an opioid crisis in communities, and it's really bad. And we are lucky to have two deputies within our school system, and they have Narcan. However, it's kept in their cars. It doesn't come in the school building. As of late, I spent all day yesterday in Shannon's researching this and putting something together just to have it, at the end of the day, changed, so I feel a little bit off with this. But meaning that I was ready to set policy for having Narcan in the schools, I couldn't find one that I liked from other school systems, because I'd like to just see what our school systems are doing, not reinvent the wheel kind of thing. Let's see what they have in place. Basically, I think that we should be able to have access to the Narcan for any possible overdose at school. And I'm not just talking about students. I'm talking about staff members, unfortunately, possibly, visitors to our school system, even some of our children. It's hard to even accept that, but it is very possible. And sporting events, students coming from other school systems, it's out there. I asked my deputies at school, you know, it's been quiet, if it was still, you know, it was still a problem. And I asked my friend, who's a nurse practitioner, the same thing. She works the ER in Page County sometimes, and she said, "It's still a really bad issue." And do you agree with me? Okay, so even though it's quieted down, it's still happening. People are still overdose. Having Narcan in the school system didn't seem to be a problem for us until yesterday. I called Tracy White, Department of Education. She is a student, School Health Services nurse, and I asked her if there was a policy that they could give us, or some reference, or just direction to go for this. She said, "Right now, they're discussing whether it should be in schools at all. I don't know what's coming over the border, but whatever is coming over now, whatever they're lacing the drugs with, has the potential to cause a reaction with the Narcan." That's all she told me, so I'm trying to research that. Can you help out with that?
I haven't heard it. Having a reaction with Narcan, Narcan doesn't react to anything besides bringing your high down. There is a new level or mix of fentanyl that's been turning up that is resistant to the Narcan, and if you get a good enough dose, you die, period.
Right.
But Narcan itself has no side effects. If I give it to you for some reason by mistake, it won't do anything to you.
It won't do anything. This is true. You know, right now, we do have a lot of overdoses, and we need to have something in place. I'm gonna probably come back after I do more research, because Tracy White did say, "I am not going to endorse it right now." And if she's the Virginia Department of Education, I think I have to just wait and see. I want to say, though, that both of us have been through the Revive Training Course. We both have naloxone available, and I know the deputies have it in their cars, so I'm not sure why they keep it in the cars, not on their person.
The security car.
Okay.
Shouldn't be in the car. Should be kept somewhere where it's room temperature.
Okay, well, I didn't mean to get anybody in trouble, but, but anyway, if it's in their car, then I'm gonna be doing CPR while Robbie runs out and gets it, and vice versa, you know.
I don't see why we wouldn't have it. Churches are getting it, all kinds of different groups have it.
Everybody and their brother has it.
I've seen people in this county with a giant vial in their house. I don't see why the school couldn't have it.
And it is, it's a local decision. It is going to be a board decision whether or not you want your people trained. However, Linda also has information from the Board of Nursing, where they're not endorsing health professionals to...
They don't endorse anybody.
Everybody's gun-shocked because of what they're doing.
We have our own licenses that we have to protect, too, so, you know, maybe I don't have to administer it. I can just be part of the emergency response.
Well, and that's, these are all considerations for the board to take on, if that's something. Now, the SBA has not vetted a Narcan policy yet.
What is policy JHCD, Harvey? Isn't that, isn't that a...
There's no known side effects with Narcan, as we know. I haven't heard about the new batch, but the only way you're gonna get that is either you intentionally take it, or God forbid, a child gets into mom, dad, uncle, older brother, sisters, whatever. Either way, you're trying to save their life. They're dead. So if they have a reaction, and they have hives, whelps, something else that goes on, it's still better than being dead.
Right.
So, I mean, it's saving lives, it's not...
Right, and I don't think that...
I don't see a reason we wouldn't have that available, just like an AED or First Aid Group.
I have a handout that, if you get, I know we don't have time to read it now, but let me just say that this is code that is, I'm looking for it now, provision 5401, you know, Virginia Code. The concern that Tracy White wrote down was the absence, it's a legislation that leaves schools out of, it covers firefighters, it lists all kinds of people, but it leaves school systems out of the legislation. That was her concern, so until they clear that up, I have exactly what they...
So we sign Mr. Temple and Mr. Swindler up as volunteer farmhand. Then we'll watch and can we care?
Yeah, but as far as having it, and it just says, "The absence of schools in the legislation is a concern. The intention of the law may have been directed to include schools along with other agencies listed within the law. However, the K through 12-year population, minors, are not represented in this code." So that seems to be the problem. This is the paper I gave you, if you want to get that later.
You don't even need a prescription for this.
Right.
You buy it over at the counter.
They'll just give it to you.
Yes.
Sorry. I mean, they're handing it out, doing, anybody that owns the training can get it.
Because there's no legal...
There's 12 websites that show you where you get it free.
Yeah, and there are no side effects.
It seems to me like you guys all like the idea of having it available, and we do too.
Can I make a motion?
Well, we, so, we would, we're not, we can't, we can't do this yet because we have to modify our policy. So right in our policy, non-prescription medications. Employees are up at the county school, may not give non-prescription medication to students. They may only give non-prescription medication to students when written permission is from the parent. So we have to do some policy changes if we're gonna adopt any of it.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Please do. It's your turn.
So if I got a kid that's in anaphylactic shock, I'm gonna give him the EpiPen.
Good for you.
Well, I'm sure there's regulations here about, and there was one for EpiPen.
There is a policy for EpiPen.
Yeah, so there's a regulation for it. So we, my point is, we're not ready to make a motion on something until we have a policy that just doesn't, it's gotta be deconflicted with our current policy set, just to guard everybody.
I'm telling you, that phone conversation I had yesterday just messed me up big time. I was ready to...
But now, the first task of the policy committee, we would like to bring you on board to show you what we've found so far, so we can look at some of the best ways to bring back to the full board with some recommendations. So we would like to look at that. But I would like to say one thing, that, you know, I think this has to be a much more comprehensive approach, because we're looking at this from the other side, and I think there's a deeper rooted issue here, which is the opioid crisis, and I think we have to really take a good, hard look at that as a community and admit that that is in our backyard, and we have a huge substance abuse problem. Our CSA funds that are going to child placements and foster care is a huge issue. The state, the state average is four kids per thousand. We're at 24 for our tiny community, and 97% of those are because of opioid and substance abuse issues. So Rappahannock, we have a problem, and it's right here, and we're small, and we're the school system, so we need to do more with health promotion and education, substance abuse treatment. All of this is a bigger part of that. This is a little Band-Aid on the end of that, but we have a big, big issue, and we have to start loosening that death grip that substance abuse disorder is having on our children, because it's strangling our families, and we're seeing kids being taken away a lot. And we're too small to have that happen here. We love our kids, we love our families, we know what's going on, but we need a better system to be able to report that, get people the services they need, and the treatment that they need. And we have a lack, limited access to that, and that's, that's very sad. We're seeing a lot of that happen. So, community call to action, we need everybody, we need the churches, we need law enforcement, we need...
I agree with you 100%. I do, I do believe that in the interim, we need to be able to save a life if we need to save a life, whether it's an EpiPen or a shot, you know, a Narcan shot.
Right, so what we need to have, by the next time we're together, so if you see JHCD Regulation 3, it speaks specifically to EpiPens, right?
Yeah.
And the fact that it supersedes the policy that says no non-prescription things without parental approval. And so it sets limits around that thing. So really, we just need Regulation 4.
Right.
And I think this board would support such a thing.
There's a JHCD RZ, but that's in Lynchburg City Schools. I'm not sure whether that's...
Well, and a regulation is something that administration can approve and enact, if you're okay with that, but we'd still like to bring it before the public and the board, because it is such a new and controversial issue in some respects, so it'd be good to get that out there and be transparent as possible. But we're, we're with you. I mean, we do have availability of it, our SROs do have it, so it's not like we're not covered in an emergency, but liability wise, we want to make sure we cover it.
I don't see, I don't see a liability issue, but, I mean, I'm not, obviously...
Anybody wouldn't want their child to have Narcan.
But that's, I guess what I'd like to do, Mr. Mills, is ask the superintendent to draft a revision to the, to the policy that reflects EpiPens and so forth, number four, and have it reflect Narcan.
Yep.
And bring that to the, bring that to the, to the committee sometime this month.
Yep.
So that the committee can make a recommendation.
We can vote on it.
So we can vote on it next month.
Right.
Is there anything else besides Narcan and EpiPen?
Those are the only two things. Well, I don't know. No, I mean, they're allowed to use their emergency inhalers, neb treatments, all those things as needed. They don't, you know, we have permission forms on every student that gets anything.
We have, we have kids with, with blood issues as well, right? Where they have to take, they have to take, take their, take their blood sugars?
Oh, yes. I didn't know where you're going with blood issues. Type 1?
Yeah.
We have high numbers of type 1 for some reason in this community. I would be willing to meet with anybody about this if they, if you want to form a committee or something.
Well, I think we have a, we have a policy committee.
Okay.
And that committee should be with the superintendent and with you, and come up with...
That'd be great.
And you, and I am going to write a letter to the governor.
Yes.
I am all about writing letters.
Hey, when we write a letter to him, we will send a copy of the thing that we approved for our district, so that they have a model.
Right, right.
There is, there is one right here, Russ, from Lynchburg. I have today.
You got it?
You got it, yeah. Thank you very much.
You want to hold on to that?
Yeah, bring it to me.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, ladies.
But on what you were mentioning, Shannon, about education and family education, I just,
I'm curious about how our DARE program is educating families about, about this issue. I'm curious about how young, how, how kids, kids go into surgery and they come out with opioids. I mean, kids, kids go into surgery and they come out, my, my kid had surgery and he came out with an opioid as a, as a painkiller. And, and I do think that it's really important for families to understand what a doctor's order can mean. I just really don't, I didn't see that come through the DARE program for my student.
Well, and there is a new House bill that has mandated in, in the General Assembly that we do take a harder look at our substance abuse prevention, health education. So, B D O E has not translated that into specific standards for grade levels yet, but that is something also that Linda is helping us with too.
Yeah.
On the most appropriate place through our health education as well as DARE, but it's going to take a concerted effort. We want to be very intentional about saying this, but also having our school safety summit coming up, hopefully February 20th. We, I think we've solidified that date now. But a portion of that will be to educate families about vaping and substance abuse, which are two major issues, hot topics for school safety right now.
We, we can educate kids all day long, but it's, in many cases, the adults.
Well, that's why the summit is for parents and for students.
Create a lot of the.
Here, it's what, fifth grade?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a one grade deal.
And you get it, everybody's great about it. Some kids still aren't. It's the older ones that are going to experiment later, peer pressure, friends, boyfriend, girlfriend, whatever.
That's your health education.
How intensive is it? I mean, weed will make them feel great. So, well, heroin, it's the other effects of that drug use, kind of like when you teach sex ed or driving, you show the accident, you show the disease.
Bad stuff too, yes.
This is the other side of, of the drug abuse. This is what they do for it, to get it, to keep it. They rob their mothers, they, you know, they, they do this, that, and the other. It, it, you know, it, it, to me, it seems like it needs to be a little bit more information and education.
For sure.
DARE is real intensive to fifth grade. We're doing it for the eighth grade, the ninth grade, the 10th grade.
Health.
And that's the last, last year's.
That's where it's got to be.
It can be. I mean, the, the summit is a great idea, but it, it would be nice to see more of that in the grades and not just a one-time shot.
There was an example at the last V S B A meeting of, of, that Mr. Mills and I went to a talk. It was a tied, I can't remember which, it was Norfolk, that had, there was, they had a comprehensive curriculum that went, that started early in terms of just that prescription medication is dangerous, and, and that's, that's the beginning, and it's available.
Well, and we want families to know how to safeguard their homes, understand warning signs, and what does this look like, and.
Oh, yeah, it starts at home a lot, a lot of times.
It starts at home. It totally does.
You've got a whole cabinet full of you wouldn't believe.
Well, and it's over prescribed.
It was. They've cut it back a lot, but it was at one time.
Is there, is there any way to, to, I mean, there's what, four physicians in Rappahannock? Most people see one of those four somewhere down the line.
But if someone breaks their arm, they go to U V A and they get a prescription for something.
Yeah.
They're trained now, but you can still, people still fudge it and go to different doctors or send their kids. It, it happens.
But could they not, as a coalition, come together and, and, and do something from an adult perspective?
Well, and that's something I think we need to look at as a community. We need everybody.
I'm not saying as a school board, but I mean, as a community.
Absolutely. I think they'd be willing to. I really do think they're, they're at the table too, but I think it's going to take a very planned concerted effort. But there's got to be a way that we have some reporting strategies and some treatment options that are here. We have counseling groups that are willing to come, come in that we've said before, but we don't have, we have to think outside the box. What's here? The access, the limited access to those treatment services are, is a huge detriment to the, our people that we are treating and are getting better.
I'm not going to take it till they have to.
Yeah. But if they were here, and what if we, you know, repurposed a bed and breakfast or something in Rappahannock, six to eight beds where we provided treatment, they could still receive state funding and could still make some money on that, and we could write whatever grants you want to. I'm sure I could get a whole bunch for that, but, you know, we need something here to be able to take care of our people and not worry about that, you know, the school to prison pipeline and just punitive all the time. We've got to have those treatment options too and a, and a place to go for help.
Well, yeah, that, that basically is what I was saying, is that through the health department or so, social services or somebody.
Yeah.
Could, I mean, we, we could, we could use the auditorium and.
But we don't have any direction of it. It's more of a board supervisors issue.
It is.
We could, you know, bring in former students who have had issues. I'm sure there's a couple that I know. And hey, this is what I went through and how I got on, and this is how it did in my life, and this is how I got out of it.
Well, when we had Chris Heron come because of the, the Path Foundation brought him here, that was amazing. And for those of us who were in there, those children who stood up in front of an audience to share the experiences that they have had and they've witnessed and the trauma, it's here. It's here in a big way, and we need to do something about it together.
Everything from Nyquil all the way down to heroin. You wouldn't believe the stuff people, like seven out of 10, have something, whether you realize or not.
Unbelievable. So, yeah, we're small, but we've got, we've got to take care of them. We know what's happening with each other because we know everybody. So, we've just got to kind of come together and take care of our people that we know are having trouble.
Could we, as a board, request, or, or go to the board of supervisors with this kind of thought process, that this is a, something we all need to do together?
I love that.
You try. I don't know.
We can bring the agency together. I'm sure.
I would think a good baby step is to make sure we're educating the students who are under our roof.
Well, I think we do a pretty good job of that.
Well, I think, I think, like, yeah, we just need to have more of a broader picture of their, their lives than we have today.
We're producing better drivers than we are people that say no.
That's what we can initially do.
That's our part, but.
That's our part.
We can raise awareness and educate the community, and that's also our part. So, I think we can do as much raising awareness as we can.
Why if they do, somebody knows, everybody knows it's a debate. You know, having you. Till you did that.
Hot topic on.
All right.
We care about it. We do.
Talking about risk videos.
Okay. Next item. Thank you. We'll continue working on this. So, Food Service Director Amanda Butler had the privilege of going through a federal USDA audit process, which is always a whole lot of fun. So, she's going to share with you the findings of that review.
So, in December, Virginia Department of Ed came, and we did our federal administrative program review. So, like Dr. Grimsley mentioned, it's USDA, so every school across the country is getting the same audit, and then they then train the state agency to come. So, that was the week of December 11th through 13th. So, since we participate in two federal programs, the National School Lunch Program and the School Breakfast Program, it's really important to make sure we're in compliance since we're receiving federal funds. So, they break up the review into two areas, the critical areas of review. So, for performance standard one, we're looking at meal access and reimbursement. So, certification, this excludes if students are enrolled with SNAP or Medicaid. They're directly certified, but we are making sure those that are applying based on household and income size was done correctly. Benefit issuance, so they are checking that those that are free and reduced, they are receiving those benefits. Verification, we verify a percentage of those applications to ensure that household income is in fact what they put on their application. And then meal counting and claiming. So, the state wants to make sure what we are claiming, we're serving and being reimbursed for is actually what's going on. And then the second component for critical area is meal pattern and nutritional quality. So, they set a standard on what the meal should look like, and part of reimbursement is ensuring that we're meeting those requirements, which is important. And then we have the general areas. So, our civil rights, our local wellness policy, competitive foods, our health inspections with the Department of Health, record keeping and so forth. So, we had a total of seven findings. This audit is done every three years, so I'm going to go through the findings, which, you know, in discussion with Dr. Grimsley and Stacy, but who was the previous Food Service Director. These audits are an incredible learning opportunity on how to improve what we're currently doing and some things, just to tweak to make sure we can do the best we can. So, this report, we met with Casey Dickinson. It was the exit conference summary, so it's just very brief, what she found, and then I should be getting the final report here soon. And then from there, I'll work on the corrective action. And then this administrative review is public knowledge, so it'll be on D O E's website once everything is finalized and processed. So, the first finding under performance standard one, so we had 184 students that their families submitted a paper application. So, those are excluding the Medicaid and SNAP. So, these are based on household size and income. And this was a tricky situation. She even reached out to her, her supervisor. I was always under the impression if one child in the household receives a benefit, you can extend that to all. So, one student received free, so I extended that to the other sibling when we learned that the households joined together. But she told me that's only the case with direct certifications. So, again, SNAP and Medicaid. When it's truly based on household size and income, you have to go by that application for that student. So, that student was, went from free to reduced, and we contacted the family of that change, and they were understanding of, of that change. The second finding had to do with verification. So, again, we pull a percentage of those paper applications. This was an error on my part. What I looked at, the family included their take-home pay, and then once I received their pays up, that's indeed what they put on their application when it needs to be their gross. So, that was one thing that we learned while going through verification. Again, we notified, once we updated with their pay, it dropped that student into the reduced category, and once explaining that to their parents, they understood as well. So, these two findings are considered a fiscal action. However, we didn't meet the threshold to then where we're being penalized financially, which is good. So, we learned through those too. For our performance standard two, this has more to do with the menu and the meal pattern. So, within, we meet certain food groups for the age groups, and then there are subcategories that we need to meet as well. So, within vegetables, there's dark leafy greens, there's red orange, and then there's also bean and legume. So, we learned through this for the week that they picked, the chili at the high school didn't have enough beans to meet that minimum. Right. So, again, a learning opportunity. We kind of talked about some strategies.
A new term for bean counters.
Yeah. So, we talked about some strategies just to make sure we are in compliance with enough beans for future. Another thing she brought up with the addition of, so we have the hot, we call it the hot line, so the hot entree, and then the salad baked potato bar. She just recommended having signage that students who go down the salad bar and baked potato bar, that they're also available to get the hot vegetables on the opposite bar since those are getting the subgroups. So, they're welcome too, but she just recommended having some signage so students know as well. So, then, again, this was not a repeat finding, so no fiscal action from the audit. Technical assistance, and this is where it's kind of tricky with our high school being eight through 12. The, the meal food patterns set by USDA go from K to five, six to eight, and then, I'm sorry, they have six to eight and then nine to 12. So, that's where we kind of have an overlap. The difference between is eighth graders, it's a minimum, we have to offer a minimum of a half a cup of fruit. We're ninth grade through 12, it's a minimum of a cup, so we offer a cup. The only thing is that may throw an eighth grader over their calorie range. We have a minimum and a maximum. Yeah. However, talking to, you know, previously talking to our specialists as well as this auditor, our goal is for kids to eat healthy. So, if they eat that whole cup of fruit, that's good. So, really, she just recommended having clear signage. So, we're going to keep doing what we're doing and offering a minimum of a cup, but we just need to be clear on what their rules are. So, the other technical assistance was we were offering a chew stick, but it wasn't on the menu, so. Yeah. We added it to the menu since it was available. So, then, moving into the general findings, fortunately, we have not had to go through a civil rights procedure in my time, so I had always defaulted to our division procedure, which I learned that USDA has a little bit different standards. So, we'll be updating the food services civil rights procedure in the event that a complaint was received. Funding number two, which Dr. Grimsley and I were not pleased with, and unfortunately, our auditor was the messenger in all this, our local wellness policy did not meet what USDA is setting forth, which we explained, you know, we, we use V S B A, we trust their guidance, we trust their thoroughness, and she said, every school that they've been auditing, they have to write this up that uses V S B A. So, they are in communication with V S B A for future, so to prevent in the future, but in the meantime, we'll be just changing our wording to then be compliant. So, we'll, I'll be back again to update that, so. The last two findings, in general findings and overall, so smart snacks, this includes, it's also called competitive foods. It's what's available in the vending machines. That is also regulated if it's offered during the school day. A few of the things, items in there were not smart snack compliant, including, again, it breaks down sixth grade through eighth grade and then nine through 12. So, some of the things in the vending machine, ninth through 12th graders could have, but eighth graders couldn't.
Well, sign up, no eighth graders, please.
And that's, yeah, so that's an option, or she said.
Sell them all.
So, she informed, what most schools do is if it's turned off and then until 30 minutes after the school day, it doesn't have to be regulated, or just, or, yeah, that's, right, or just make sure everything is smart, smart snack compliant. So, that's one thing we'll be, we'll be working on, so. The last one, we had pass up our food safety plans in place. However, they weren't updated since 2014. So, she just recommended making sure it's a living, breathing document. We're updating it, we're making sure all employees are aware of it and familiar with it, so, which is a good recommendation. She did commend us on a few things. So, here at the high school, we added second chance breakfast, which I know Mr. Swindler and all high school staff can agree, that has been a huge hit. So, this is 10 minutes added in between first and second block, and they'll allow students to go get breakfast, because I'm sure they can say, you know, first thing in the morning, either they're not hungry or they're rushing to get to school, but then, especially if they have second lunch, that could be a long time before a meal. Our numbers have dealt, more than doubled for our, for our breakfast participation, which is great. So, she commended us on that. She also commended us on offering a variety of vegetables and how they were cooked in different ways. When, the day she was there, we had the roasted broccoli, and she said that was the first time she had ever had that in a school division, so she was really impressed with that. And then the third thing she commended us for is just making the overall connection to nutrition, physical education, and just overall well-being of students and how we integrate that. We were very excited to show the neuronazium and the action-based learning lab in both our schools with Commit to Be Fit, so she was really impressed with that. Again, impressed with the local wellness policy and how we're putting it into action. Thank you. Any questions?
And she's not coming back for three years.
You're right. Three years, so.
So, I was wondering, on slide six, it talks about regarding standards on foods and beverages available during the school day but not sold, like celebrations or maybe rewards. Is that, is that?
So.
I don't know if we have a policy on that, but I'd be curious to know what that is.
So, my understanding of the guidance is if it is a school party that is not regulated, we can recommend, you know, families and teachers bring in healthy items, but since it is being offered versus sold, there's not a guidance on that. If it's being sold, such as a vending machine, that's when there are standards put in if it's during the school day.
How about things like rewards, like there are teachers who reward kids with candy?
And that was in one of our Commit to Fit newsletter to teachers, we kind of gave some suggestions of non-food rewards, but again, that's not something...
It's not something we're regular...
Yeah, we can promote, but, yeah, so, yeah. All right, thank you.
No idea.
Yeah, I learned, I learned a lot. But overall, there was a good amount from the offsite data that went well, so just a few things we need to work on and improve.
I guess you can be confident that three years from now, they'll change the rules so that they're upon something else, right?
Yes, for sure, constantly evolving, which can be good, but keep drawing your toes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5.3 on the agenda, it is that time where we need to update our gifted plan. Our local gifted services plan usually runs for a five to six year time period, in which case you're always looking at it annually to, you know, be sure you're compliant, but every five or six years, five years, we bring it back up for adoption. So our gifted specialist, Ms. Lilo Wolf, is here to give you an overview of that process and where we're at right now with the gifted plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I'm here for the third time. This is our third gifted plan that I've been working on, and I'm, we haven't made a lot of changes, but we have done some. The links are there in this website, with this PowerPoint, if you wish to look at the website where the plan, the present plan is located, and where the future plan will be located, as well as state documents, like the Virginia gifted regulations that govern what we do. So the local plan for the gifted is provided, there's a template provided by the state, and just like Linda said, we don't, I don't do something totally on my own, we, as gifted coordinators around the state, find the best, and the ones that suit our school system, and use each other's work and work together. I belong to the Northern Virginia Council for Gifted and Talented Education, and it is amazing group of people that share their knowledge and their expertise and help us, there's always someone you can go to if you need some help with something, and I have relied on those people greatly. And so, there wasn't a lot to do for this plan, actually, this year. There was a technical review, and that's where members of the state, so that Shannon and I were two people that went and looked at another region's plans, and went through them and gave comments, recommendations, and commendations. And so our plan went through the same process, and that's one of the things that we used to make changes. Plus, our stakeholders, our parents, our students, make recommendations, our teachers, and just life in general, you know, RTI, yes RTI, no RTI, scheduling, things come about, and we figure out what we need to do. Part one includes our philosophy and describes the areas we identify to provide services for our students. That's pretty much our wording, and something that we've had, and changed very little, really, over the years. In the plan, I also made it so that you can see the italicized print is what the state gives us. So there's a lot in that plan that is italicized, and so, you know, then we just fill in our own information based on that. So, and I have a little thing there that says after this point, well, that was, that's last year's, well, that is this one, yeah, sorry.
I'll just pull it up in case.
Yeah, in case we want to refer to it, all right. So then, part two describes our goals and objectives. In this section, it was recommended that we clarify those two, and I hope we did a better job of clarifying the goal and the objective within that section. Part three is very descriptive, and is a good guide for us to follow on how we do our screening, how referrals are made, the process for identification, and our service procedures. And basically, our identification areas are based on what we can serve. So we serve general intellectual and art, visual arts. We don't serve areas, we don't identify students as gifted in areas that we don't serve. When they get to the high school, if they participate in programs that are available, they are then identified. So like, we don't identify a student in the performing arts, for example, but if at a high school level, they get accepted to the governor's school for performing arts, then they're considered identified as gifted in that area, if that makes sense. So basically, it's the same as it's been the last six years. The other two parts, both are notification and any changes in services, very simple, just explanations of what we do. There are charts in this document to make it more interest, you know, easy to understand, Evidence of appropriate service options, that's where we show that we have a continuation of services. So that's a process of trying to, sometimes for me, go backward, like what are we doing at the high school that we can then start at the elementary school, to make sure that our services continue. And some of the things we do at the elementary school are advanced problem-solving tests, like the Continental Math League, the Word Masters, which is a higher-level thinking, problem-based vocabulary program, so that would lead into our AP English and our Advanced Math coursework. At the high school, a lot of our students are in Quiz Bowl, so at the elementary school, we support programs like Battle of the Books and 24 to get students out and participating in academic programs. We have a summer gifted program for rising sixth through eighth grade students at the elementary school, or in middle school, those going up to eighth grade, and that comes a discussion about the governor's school programs that are available to students at the high school level. Our arts at the high school, we just aren't, I'm just so thankful for, I have students in middle school that would totally appreciate, and their mental health would really soar sometimes if they had some of the drama that, I've just seen wonderful things happen to our high school students because of the programs we have here for them. So, and with our arts, we attempt also, we have a more planned visual arts program at the elementary school, and at the high school, we look for our community for ways to participate, but also there, again, the drama program involves our band, involves our art students, and provides so many outlets for our students. So there is a continuation of services, and we're constantly looking to improve that, but we also have to recognize that we have a small population, and that students can't do everything, so we just work to guide them, and they seem to thrive. The last parts, again, we met the standards throughout in our review, we had some recommendations, and we had some commendations. One of our commendations that I'm very pleased to see that was recognized was that we do look for the twice-exceptional students. We identify when we can serve, so that, but in a small system like this, we can differentiate for all students, and we do, and that is a major part of the services in our plan. And so, making sure that we're serving students' needs wherever they are, and looking for growth wherever they are, is one of the things I'm most proud about our faculties for. So there is our vision statement. We want to empower every student. We don't want to leave any behind, and that means that we want to look to have our students that are able and capable do their best and show growth, not just leave them knowing that they can pass the SOL, and I can get just as passionate as Shannon here, you can tell. So we just, a major part of that plan by the state is about professional development, and I think, I know, as a teacher, it is hard, because we're taught we have to do this for EL students, we have to do this for special ed students, we have to do this for gifted students, and that's probably the last person we want to have to think about, because they can do all right on their own. But I hope that as a leadership team, we can synthesize and bring things together so that mental health and all these things can be a part of our plan, and that our gifted students will fit into that, because at every level, I know they can be served, and a curriculum can be connected for them. So, looking at our vision, that would also fit in there, that we provide these opportunities, maybe we use our gifted students to help lead some of the research that we want to do, or something, so that's, for the future, that's what I look to, for working with our individuals. There's no one way for any of them to thrive, and we can really work toward that, our independent studies, as well as our governor's school programs. And the last is a quote that I have on my website, and I got it from Fairfax, from Carol Horn, but it's a good one, and it just, we want to nurture the talent in all our students, wherever they are, and there are students that are gifted in areas that we don't specifically serve, but they're there, and our teachers do our best to recognize those talents and serve them, even if they're not on the list. I closed with a piece of artwork that was done by Eve Bander when she was in sixth and seventh grade, it took her about two years to work on it, and that was something she was inspired by when she was at the governor's school in the Culpeper School System, and she wanted students to see this picture and know that they had two ways to go. Maybe, if not both ways, but, you know, she was just like looking at the arts, and looking at the sciences, and the different paths, and so that's hanging at the elementary school for students to see, and to know that schooling can provide those paths for them. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, or just find answers.
I just had a comment about, as I read through this lengthy report that you provided with us, but, one of the, one of the, one of the things it says that the gifted specialist does is to keep a portfolio for students, and see year to year what the students' goals for growth are.
That's right, that's one of the things I added.
I just think that's a great thing, and a great thing for every, I don't think that, I mean, a great thing for every student to have a sense of not just academic goals, but personal interests and goals to keep on, it feels like it fits so well with what we're doing with the profile of a graduate.
And it is something that we've done on and off throughout the years, but one of the, one of the review recommendations was to have more assessments, which is hard with all the assessments we're having, so I keep a record of the CML scores and the Word Master scores, so I just thought, all I have to do is give this to the kids, because, you know, they get a piece of paper back, and it doesn't mean anything, but, so, I am doing a session with them periodically throughout the month, and what I'm going to do is give them their scores, and then they can make, set goals for the rest of the year, and also look at growth, because we talk about the growth mindset. We used to think that if you were gifted, you were gifted, but if you don't use it, you do lose it. So, we are, I make a point of trying to discuss that with students, so that they are aware of that. And I know Shannon once commented, because I was using the model that we use for teachers for their growth, for my students, where they would set their own goals. Yeah, it is a good goal, and it would be nice to keep it going, and honestly, I have learned that so much of what we do has come from gifted. Differentiation is something Kelly Estes came back from a computer science class, she goes, you know, we shouldn't be doing the same thing with all students anymore, and we should be, kids should be in different, and she's got her kids in different sessions, I'm like, yeah, hello, we've been saying that from gifted for about 20 years now. So, so much of, like, that whole differentiation section is basically given to us, and it's something that has been around the world, and we know we need to do it, and our teachers do know that, and they do, and we do it in many different ways, and the problem-based learning that's come in has really been good, too. It combines the role of the professional, which comes from the parallel curriculum, and it's just thinking like a scientist. When you're going to do a problem-based learning project, then you take on that role, and so that's something that we can do in our imaginations, and students can be empowered, regardless of what.
My question was about, you mentioned independent studies. How does a student initiate an independent study?
That happens with the guidance counter, and we have a lot for the arts, more so at different times, when we, depending on the coursework we have, I mean, when my students, when my own children were here, we had more independent studies, probably, I think we have more offerings now in dual enrollment, so we may not have as many as we have had in the past, but I talked to students about it, I was just talking with an art student the other day about that.
And now with the fewer requirements we have for verified credits and things, there may be a whole lot more opportunities to do that, and the digitalization of our student portfolios through Profile of a Graduate is something we are implementing with the Profile of a Graduate team, that will pick up from the sixth, seventh grade interest surveys and aptitudes, and then do their academic career planning out throughout the high school career, so that does speed it, and so the tying the gifted portfolio data to that would be very important to decide the sequencing in the academic career plan and informants, so.
Well, with the academic recruitment, you almost have a portfolio to start with, for every kid.
Exactly. You do, you have to, yeah.
You have to, and it's bringing everybody to have that.
It's the way it's supposed to be.
Correct. Any other questions for Ms. Wolf?
We will, we'll be voting on this six-year plan tonight, so if you have any questions, now's the time. I did like how the comprehensive plan was tied in to this, and then various goals from the comprehensive plan, it's good to see that we...
It's just like looking at the high school for services, you have to look backwards, right? What are we doing in our plans, and we can say we're doing it here, too.
Yeah, and six-year plan, so, that's quite a bit. Thanks.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, item 5.4 is the initial report on the budget. This kicks off our budget season and our budget planning process, so typically, in January is when I bring to you what the governor has proposed, and if you've seen all of the press releases, you have seen that there is a very pro K-12 education proposal on the floor. That's wonderful, it will probably change quite a few times before we get to finality in that process, but we're pretty excited to have that starting point, so I'm just going to go over briefly with you some of those changes, and there should be a handout for everyone that puts it all on one page for you, but I also have a presentation to walk through each of those pieces, and just kind of highlight areas of interest.
Let me share.
Okay. So, state revenues that we look at to provide that basis for our budget are what we project that will be coming in from the state. Those include our Standards of Quality, or SOQ, programs for, that's funding for very specific areas, your incentive programs, categorical funding, and your lottery-funded programs, that's your state revenue in a nutshell. Then, you kind of take those funding sources and filter it through our lovely local composite index in Raffanek, and I think right now it's at 0.7642 or something like that, we're one of the highest in the state. So that basically means that a little over 20% of your budget comes from state and federal sources, whereas the local effort is nearly 80% of your budget. So, we rely on having a great relationship with our community stakeholders, and having the support of our community, because that's basically your whole budget. So if we didn't have that support, we would not have the wonderful programs that we do have here, so we thank our community very much for that, because we understand that this formula that's out of our control really is problematic, and we've discussed that just about every budget year that I can remember. So here are our revenue estimates, and what we did is, we have seen continued enrollment loss, fewer students, we did lose a bigger senior class, and we had a very unusually small kindergarten class, which really does hurt your ADM, so we're looking at seeing that decline in our revenue, so we are anticipating that, so for this year's fiscal year, fiscal year 19, we did estimate 855 as our K-12 ADM. We are projecting an 825 ADM for next time. We don't know what our kindergarten class will be next year, I'm hoping or praying that this really low kindergarten class was some type of strange anomaly, we are very small, so we, you know, each cohort of students coming through, you can see a big class and then a very small class, this one was just unusually low for the group, so hopefully that trend does not continue. But that is a consideration we have to take into consideration, because it does dictate what you get for revenue, so please keep that in mind, and we'll try to be as upfront and honest about those numbers as we can. I wanted to bring your attention to the English as a second language line, we saw a notable increase there for us, and we are about to conduct our access for ELL testing, which is your English level for efficiency, so we have 41 students on our list, which in previous years, it's been 13, 15, 18, so it's, yeah, tripled, just about, so that's a trend that we did see coming many years, well, a few years ago, and we were able to get a grant to help fund an endorsement program, to have an ESL-endorsed teacher. Once you have over 30 ESL students, you must have a full-time ESL teacher. So we've never been over the 30-year mark, so this funding here will help us, but as you can see, it's far shy of what a whole position will be. Luckily, we did have that person on staff to be endorsed, but it does require us to move staffing around.
That person can only do that.
That's right. And we've been creative with that, but that's a primary service model, yes, and that's federal law and Office of Civil Rights, and we must be compliant with that. Couple other notable, notable changes, state revenue and incentive programming, special education regional. This has a little bit to do with, we think, it's kind of new money, Carol and I were talking about this earlier, there have been a higher, much higher number of outplacements of students with special needs, as well as those who have been removed by CPS services that need educational services in the regional centers, so we're thinking this is tied to that, so that's, again, indicative of some of the other issues we were talking about. We have to do a little bit more research for that, but that's $51,000 more dollars that can help support that, so we're excited about that. Our small school enrollment loss is not funded in FY '20, so that is one item, we have a small school coalition brochure for you, too, we are part of that coalition, that is an area of advocacy that we would love to get back in that section, because we are small, we continually decline in our enrollment, so that funding really does help us kind of make up that gap in our ADM. So that funding really does help us kind of make up that gap in our ADM revenue gap. So, advocate for that if you go to the Capitol Conference next week. Let's see. School lunch program.
Have we, have we as a board advocated for that?
We, we signed the resolution to be a part of that coalition, which brings our collective advocacy forward, yes.
But would it do us any good to write to our delegate as a board?
Absolutely. That would help.
I can deliver to him.
Let's go ahead. Talk to him. Bring him the brochure and say, these are the areas that we, because we all do agree with this and the state coalition of superintendents for small rural districts, we do look at those pieces and advocate pretty strongly for that, because we're seeing that those monies continually being funneled away from the smaller counties and being filtered more through the LCI formula for, you know, poorer, bigger, inner-city schools. So, that's important, too. We're not taking that away, but there's other ways that we can sort of spread the wealth with some new money. So, at-risk add-ons, small school enrollment loss, those are pieces that we're after, without messing with the LCI basic aid formula. So if you're into policy advocacy, those are some areas to give you some talking points, I'd be glad to do it. State revenue, continued lottery programs. You might have seen the governor saying, you know, that we have this surplus of lottery monies that we're going to invest back in education. That's wonderful, too. Our portion not too huge with the supplemental lottery. If you see down here, we've got $1,000 of that because of our formula. But our supplemental basic aid, we did see an increase there, $52,000. So, that's helpful. So our total state revenue, we're up $52,000 with the governor's proposal at this point. Again, I say that at this point, because it does change quite a few times before we get finalized. Also, in the governor's proposal, he did, and I'm sure teachers are on top of that, is the 5% mandated increase with the biennium. Now, if you remember, the, the previous biennium budget had it at 3%. So last year we gave a 2% raise, which left 1% mandated for this year, because we're in the second half of that biennium budget. So, if it is pushed up to 5%, because we did three, I mean, two last time, we'd be mandated to do a 3% increase this time. And that's part of the mandate. The governor did provide compensation supplement money for that, 60 or so thousand for us. But when you're talking a 3% raise across the board, that's upwards of 250-something thousand that we've got to come up with. So, it's exciting, we love that, but it's again, pretty unfunded for us. It's a lot more local effort. So, we'll have to be looking at that. And we are. I want to see that. So federal funding also makes up a portion of your budget. This is really a guessing game with your federal funds. They try to give you a best guess estimate of your allocation in late spring. We don't even get actual allocations until late August, early September, and by then you're far gone started your next school year into the next budget. But it changes throughout the year several times and what we have to put in our revisions to our applications and revise those. So, and sometimes you take a hit mid-year. So, that's again a guessing game, but we use our best projections. And that's why we don't, we try not to overinflate that and come up with our best guess at this point. And then any differences when we get the actual allocations are reconciled when we have our November appropriations with the Board of Supervisors. So that's that big one. And then our grant funds are rolled into that. An option that we've talked about in previous years, too, is to take any of the grant funds you anticipate, put that in the budget initially, so when it's approved, you don't have to go through the supplemental appropriation process later. However, that's going to take a lot of education for the community, because that, your bottom line, will be so much bigger initially and it'll look like this huge increase that happened, when really it's just projecting out for the November earlier. It hasn't been an issue with us, because we know our carryover funds and you have a more precise number for those, those funds. So, that is just for consideration, if that were something you wanted to build into the budget upfront, instead of waiting then. So here's our federal funds projections. Our school food numbers stay the same. Title I, we're looking at an increase. Those are your at-risk services monies, so that's going up. Special education, we took a hit there for federal funds in our flow-through grant. And our preschool handicap grant stays the same for now, but it's again, just a guessing game. We'll know our actual numbers much later. Title II, projecting to stay, about to come up a little bit. And Title II monies are for your teacher professional development conferences and things like that. So that's your total federal funds.
Could you go to the special ed flows?
Yep.
19 is 218, 640, right? And projected 171?
That number isn't...
Let me double check.
And 20,000?
That, that number didn't...
It should be a minus.
Yeah, and it shouldn't be 20 either.
It should be more than 20.
218, I'm sorry. It went up to 220.
You know what?
There's a mistake on this slide. Your handout's correct. Your handout is, this one. I will fix the slide and we'll reload that to board docs. Good catch, thank you.
Cost you a dollar.
Thank you. So, okay. Whew, I panicked for a second. I didn't think you took that big of a hit in special ed. We're okay, Carol. Thank you. Okay. So flow-through grant came up to 220. I was like, we have more kids and more special ed cases, that doesn't make sense, sorry.
I think it just copied.
Typo, yeah. It copied.
Well, it's copied. It's cut 171, 062 is twice.
Oh, it copied from Title I.
It copied.
Yes, it did. Okay, we'll fix that slide, I apologize. This is correct.
Okay. I didn't mean to embarrass anybody.
No, thank you, thank you. Please feel free to correct any mistakes I make like that.
Just wasn't confusing.
All right, so your projected revenue summary, that does look, double-check here, that looks accurate from your handout. The other monies and what the county gives us, of course, will be determined as we go through this process. And at one point in later spring, you'll see actually three different budgets at one point that we're projecting on. So it will be the Senate Finance Committee and the House Senate, the Senate Finance Committee and then the governor's proposal and what might happen. So we'll do a best-case, worst-case, like we did last year, comparison and give the budget of need based on our analysis of, of our needs. This year we also included a community survey to help prioritize areas. Some variables that will continually affect this process as we go through, our health insurance numbers. We're probably going to project out a 12% increase. That's what our health insurance agent is saying. That's what they're telling everyone in local choice. So don't panic, because we were told to do 15 last year, we came in at zero. So, we're, we stick to our commitment to health and wellness, we commit to be fit and we hope it continues to keep our numbers low there. The General Assembly Finance Committee, as I said, this month we send out our intent forms for staff, so we'll get an idea of our staff numbers of who is retiring or leaving us or intends to return. So that helps us, too, with our numbers. And then actual allocations as those come available and our actual ADM and fall enrollment will, will play into that. So ADM, March 31st is that magic date, so we won't know until then which number to plug in to say what we actually will receive from the state for this year to reconcile that. Okay. Budget priorities that we've identified so far throughout our staff interviews and team meetings and principal meetings and administrative meetings. Safety remains at the top of the list. Our student safety is always paramount. Profile of a graduate, because of all of these mandates, is vital. There's so many changes coming at us so fast. This is probably one of the most integral needs that we have and we'll have to be very creative at how we make sure that we stay compliant with that, because it affects kids' graduation requirements and their diplomas. So when it comes to that, and there, there have been schools in the news that have been audited and, and those requirements pulled from kids. So, we are going to try to make sure that does not happen here. So, major area of focus, teacher-staff raises, hot topic across the state, across the nation right now, bringing up teacher salaries to be competitive. Facilities needs, we took care of so much this past summer and continually do so throughout the year, so our facilities are in excellent shape. And we are currently working with Gary Curry to do some long-range planning to that effect and look at our capital needs, the big-ticket items, and try to work together as a community and as a county to make sure we're, we're planning for those. So that's a, a great thing. STEAM education, so we're very excited to integrate computer science and STEAM education, more science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics, and integrating that into the curriculum and having other parallel curricula that support that. Community priorities, our survey will remain, remain active till about mid-February, at which point we'll look at those, publish those and talk about them.
Are we promoting that anyway?
We have. We've put it out there on social media, we're sending it in Tuesday folders, we're doing reminders. So it's gotten a lot of hits so far.
I didn't see anything in the paper. Is there anything in the paper?
It hasn't been in the paper as of yet. It's also up on our website.
I've noticed it there. I'm not sure how many folks that don't have kids in the school look at your website.
No, we'll get it out.
But they do, but they do see the paper. And, you know, I've seen it on Facebook.
We'll continue to promote it. Now that we've kicked off budget season and it's, everyone's thinking that way, it'll be a great time. That's why we kept it open through mid-February, too. So, please take our survey and help us identify those priorities that are important to you. And then board priorities, we'll, we'll talk about those, too. There is a work session, if you choose to keep it, right? Next Tuesday. So, and that's typically where you take all this and digesting review priorities and anything that you really want us to consider going forward. The challenges that we're facing and do you want to project high on the, the staff raises or insurance? That's where we decide some of those things, so we can continually build off of those building blocks.
Next Tuesday. Next Tuesday's okay with everyone?
Was that the 15?
15.
You go to Richmond that day, right?
I would be there in the morning, but I would be back by then. I just have a big old day.
Not sure.
Schedule comes out.
6:30, and that work session will be at the school board office.
Yeah, I think that'll make for conference room.
Hopefully not now, but...
Well, we'll have a...
Yeah, I'll be there.
Any questions about the governor's proposal and local impact on that?
Wait and see.
Wait and see. But it's good we're starting in the black for once.
Well, we go after this work session.
I hope so, I hope so.
What time do you have that, the work session?
6:30.
6:30, certainly.
I was just wondering if you could explain to all of us about the small school enrollment laws.
Absolutely.
Like, just have a...
I said, no, thank you.
What the rationale, or what, what it is.
Initially, I'd be happy to. Initially, last year, when the governor proposed that budget, it started out as hold harmless funding. And if you remember, I think that number was about $161,000 that they were going to give us. We were very excited about that money. It was a hold harmless provision for the adjustments in LCI and also enrollment loss. So that's how that conversation started politically. What ended up happening is that they needed that money. There were too many divisions that were adversely affected and needed the money, so they took it away. They modified that impact by giving us a small school enrollment loss for one year of the biennium, with the understanding that it wouldn't happen the following year. Now, the 161 was going to do the same thing, hold harmless or no-loss funding. So they were going to give us the 161 for that first part of the biennium, then there was going to be nothing. So they sort of softened the blow for a year and then they still give us nothing.
So it's diminished.
It is. So we still want to say that small school enrollment loss, if you have continued percentages of enrollment loss in small school divisions, you should still have access to that money, because it is integral, because your ADM takes such a hit per student, per pupil for us. So, that's an area that we would love to see come back, as well as at-risk add-on. Those are the two pieces that we have the best chance of getting some money directly into our formula that is not affected by LCI. So if you're advocating for policy, small school enrollment loss, at-risk rural add-on, those are the two that we're looking for to come through. And I think there are, there are some delegates that are bringing that to the floor, so hopefully that'll come through some adjustments, but the more noise we can make as a coalition in rural areas, the better.
You go.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a report from Headwaters?
Yes, there is a report from Headwaters. Headwaters had a, did not have a formal board meeting last, last, it was a really nice gathering at Mr. Grove's house, and there were Headwaters and friends, and it was very lovely. I was also, wanted to let the board know that Headwaters is now about to start their new, the new plan for the next, the next five years, the next, the next plan. And they would love to have every board member, they're going to be reaching out to every board member, would like to have input from all the board members about where to go next and their next... That's it.
Great. Thanks. And the GS?
We did not meet because of the holidays. We will be meeting next Thursday, the weekend.
Thanks. The VSBACode of Conduct will be, it's on our action item list tonight. Something that we do routinely and just, you know, to be kind, to be kind to one another reminder, right?
Yes.
So, you know, if you have any comments, you can say that for the motion, I guess.
And it will need to be signed by all the board members.
Signed.
We're going to hold you, too.
We'll pass that around before you leave.
Who do we have to be kind to? You?
Yes.
No.
I vote yes.
So make sure you sign, after we vote on it, make sure you sign before you leave tonight.
Is there something to sign?
Yep. All right, we'll be going to public comments. Does anyone would like to address the board this evening? You can rise and come to the podium, state your name, district. Can ever tell if people are leaving or coming.
Yeah.
What are you doing, Jimmy?
I'm still there.
Are you coming?
He's coming.
I'm still there.
Okay, okay.
My name is Jimmy Swandler, Stonewall Hawthorne Principal of the High School. I didn't plan to speak tonight, but one of the subjects that came up earlier, I just want to share a little bit about, because it's near and dear to my heart. The discussion about Narcan and the discussion after that. One of the things that boils my blood, and not many things do, but is when I hear people say that we've got a drug problem in our schools. We don't have a drug problem in our schools, we have a drug problem in our community and it leeches into our schools. I've been involved with this building for, I don't know, seven or eight years now on a pretty close basis, and I pretty much know every nook and cranny. And I'm glad that this meeting is being covered by the public, by some sort of press, because I want everybody to know, we do not have a secret room in this building that is filled with drugs and alcohol that our kids can access. Whatever, whatever, whatever may be here at any given time is brought here. So again, it goes back to the problem is in the community. I love the DARE program, but, and I love our health program, but the truth is, if, if me or any of you develop a very effective anti-drug program for high school kids, we can quit our day jobs tomorrow and we go on a nationwide book tour. There hasn't been a really effective one yet, but the closest one I've seen is what Shannon mentioned, when Chris Heron came here to the PATH Foundation, and I'm pleased to say he's going to be back this spring, sometime in March, I think. That was the most powerful assembly I've ever seen in high school. I've never seen our kids react that way. You could have heard a pin drop in that auditorium when he was talking and, and just the reaction that he got, it was profound. I'll close with this, if, as far as, you know, what we can do. First of all, please spread the word about February the 20th. It's interesting, because I emailed Shannon over Christmas break and I said, hey, I'd like to do something to spread some information at our next parent-teacher conference about this and other things. And she says, well, as a matter of fact, we're working on this thing. I said, perfect. So they're still going to probably have some information for parent-teacher conferences, if you get a captive audience who want to do something with them. But, February 20th, please spread the word, we're, we're working to put together a, what I hope to be a very informative program for our, for our community, because that's where it's got to be. community because that's where it's got to be. We got to reach out to the community, we got to get people, you know, to come and understand what is going on in the world. Narcan is great, it'll save lives, but it's not even a Band-Aid. I mean, you know, it's such a frustrating thing to think that the best thing that we can do right now is come up with a substance that keeps people who are struggling with addiction alive. That's the best that we're able to do at the moment. And there are better things out there, they're just not widespread. And keeping with that, point number two, last day of school, we had our holiday party, great party. I left that party, I went to Warrington, I went to the Planning Commission meeting so I could speak in favor of a facility that's being proposed in Falkir County. It's Chris Heron's foundation, working along with the PATH Foundation, and they're seeking to put a treatment center out of the Airlie property there. It's going to, it got approved, and it's going to come before the Board of Supervisors this Thursday, and I hope to be able to, their Board of Supervisors, not ours, I hope to be able to go and support that as well because that's something our community will benefit from. One of the things that I've heard over the years, and it hasn't changed, just as recently, two or three years ago, we had a couple here from Culpeper that had lost their son to a drug overdose, and their message, and I've heard it over and over and over again, when he was finally ready to get help, we couldn't find it. We just, we tried, and, you know, and it's out there, but it's hard to find, and that's part of the solution. So, and irony of ironies, that proposed facility in Falkir County, 27 years ago, this coming April 20th is where I had my wedding reception, and now it's going to be a treatment facility. I think that's great. Thank you.
So you make sure that this February 20th date is for the community, not just for parents?
Absolutely.
February, February 20th?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock at the high school.
Right, and we'll have childcare for the children?
Yes, there'll be a flyer. We just came up with everything logistically today, so we just want to be sure we have it all, all our ducks in a row, and a flyer will be coming out, and we will get that out. But yes, we're trying to have food and childcare and all those pieces that deter our parents from coming. This one is particularly geared toward parents of students because it's a kind of a combination. We want the kids to hear this message, too, grade six through 12, but the community's definitely welcome to attend.
Why are we starting with grade six?
Some of the topics that are covered, those are the health standards that we have, and it's, that's the area in the climate surveys we've taken where it's the topic of need first, so that's why. And those topics, vaping, substance abuse, active shooter events, more mature audiences, kind of what you're looking at, so, yeah.
Pretty strict.
Yes.
Is there anyone else?
I just want to make a statement. I don't want to.
You don't want to get up there like that?
The camera's coming to it.
It's such a good thing to come to a school board meeting. It really gives you a good feeling, something you can take away with you, and, because you work so well together, and you accomplish so many good things. And you got to know that the county appreciates you, community appreciates you, or you wouldn't be getting all those gifts.
There you go.
And I appreciate you, and I think, I think you try.
Thank you.
You're the one that counts the most.
Anyone else? Now, we started this month, and we will continue this. There'll be a time at each of our school board meetings, if there's something in particular to the budget that you want to bring to the body, to this board, so that we're mindful of it as we go into the work sessions, it's a good time to do it publicly. You know, you can always call your school board rep, but this is an opportunity to mention something publicly related specifically to the budget. It's not the hearing, but if there's something that you have that you'd like to bring. Anybody? Not yet? All right. All right, we're going to move on. We're on action items. The first action item is the approval of the 2019 meeting calendar. Is there a motion?
Still move.
We have a motion from Mr. Grove to approve the calendar.
Second.
Mr. Ruben beats to it. Mr. Ruben, second. Is there any discussion on the calendar? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? No? It's ordered. Scholar went home. Approval of Scholar Colvinson as our next student liaison. Is there a motion?
I move.
Motion from Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Meyer got that one.
I got it.
All in favor of Skylar? I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, it's ordered. Motion to approve the VSPA Code of Conduct.
So.
We have a motion from Mr. Ruben, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum. Is there any discussion?
No.
No. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? No? It's ordered. A motion to approve the gifted plan as it was presented this evening. Is there a motion?
Still move.
A motion from Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer. Is there any discussion? All in favor, live and no, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? It's ordered. New business.